Hugh yet?
I'm here.
Annie's on.
Annie's on, how about Hugh?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So as per, let me get my mic on, that'd probably help. Alright, is that better? Okay, welcome to our July 21st, 2022 council meeting. This meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so we can have a productive meeting. Consistent with Governor Ann Marie's order, 20-28 dated March 24th, 2020, and its continuation of safe start, stay healthy directive, all public meetings continue to be held remotely, following the direction of that order. On this agenda, I've routine and necessary actions for our council to consider. We also will provide two opportunities for the public to make comments. I would like to also note in the room with me is Katie Allen, who's the administrator, and Swanson, our city clerk. Police Chief Brian Asmus. Finance Director RJ Stevenson. Director of Planning and Engineering, Lisa Keith. IT Support, Henderson. And then we also have Jocelyn. She's joined us via Zoom. Ben Schmidt, our new city engineer, welcome. And I'll let Lisa give an introduction a little bit further as we get to that. Aunt Jen Camp is on as well. As I mentioned earlier, there are two opportunities for the public to comment. When that time comes, I will acknowledge public participation, which you have up to three minutes to speak. For the record, please let us know your name and if you are a resident or not. To participate for citizen comments, the public can so indicate by choosing the chat feature on Zoom toward the bottom of your screen. Click onto that and let us know that you want to say something. Finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted until it's time for you to speak. Alright, so the first agenda item is invocation. God or Father, I thank you for all the blessings you provide us each and every day. I ask that you continue to watch over our community and help our staff and our city council make the best decisions possible. I ask that you watch over all of those who are working to keep our community safe, as well as our county. And I ask that you help the doctors and scientists get us through this as swiftly as possible so we can get back to some sense of normality. I was using my card in there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, I will take a roll call. Mayor Protem Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Severs.
Present.
Uh, Councilmember Dunn.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Langford.
Present.
And we already knew that Councilmember Comiscus would be out. Can I get a motion to excuse?
I make a motion that we.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Ford, sorry. You're there, I see you. I just read it too fast. You're on mute, I can't hear you.
No, hello, hello, hello.
Alright, sorry about that. Mayor Protem Kennedy, you want to make a motion to excuse?
Yes, I make a motion to excuse Chris, she's called in, she has conflict for this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, have it. Okay, agenda approval, Mayor Protem Kennedy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I recommend we approve the agenda with one change, rescheduling item 12 for August 12th meeting. So item 12 would be eliminated for tonight's meeting.
Excuse me, Mayor, I think it's August 4th.
Actually, August 4th.
Thank you.
With that correction, can I get a? Yeah, go ahead.
What's the holdup on that?
Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Sean.
Oh, Sean, go ahead.
No. So we're putting together the additional agreement that will be part of the ordinance and the understanding with western states. And so we want to have that agreement in place before we approve the ordinance.
Okay. Who would need a second on that?
I will.
Okay, Councilmember Langford, make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, have it. So this is our first opportunity for citizen comments. Uh, we have Mr. Solberg, who would like to make a comment, if you can unmute him, please.
Uh, Tom Solberg, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Tom Solberg, River District, thank you all, especially during this tough time, for all your service. Um, I'd like to address the transportation issues that you're gonna be talking about later on tonight, especially the excellent work that Parametrics has done on the many pages of recommendations that they've done. And I just want to go back to, just take a step back and thank, first of all, thank Katie for all the work that she's done with Wizdot. And I, um, I realize that it may not have been an accurate newspaper article, but I know that Katie and staff have been doing an awful lot of work. I also want to thank Stan for opening up Mission Avenue. The trail that's on the north side of Mission Avenue has been used by multiple, I'm gonna say dozens, if not more, every day that was done last year before we knew that we were gonna have the challenges that we did. And it's been very much appreciated that we have a safe place for people to walk along Mission Avenue from the River District to the business area in the River District. So thank you all. Reference Parametrics, um, I, I, again, it was an excellent analysis and update that you're gonna be taking a look at today and very well-supported, I thought, recommendations. Um, and I'd like to just reference back to a letter that I had read, I believe that Cam read it for me, on May 4th, regarding a master plan for bicycle pedestrian, I say golf cart and vehicle safety in the Liberty Lake area. And I know that we're in a tough time right now, and I'm not gonna go through that again, but I don't know whether Ben has had a chance to take a look at that. I did send a copy to Scott, Lisa, um, the council, the mayor, Katie, and some others. Um, so when we do get to where we're working on a master plan, I'd love to be able to help. But I'd just like to ask, if it's at all possible, can the Parametrics provide for us some of the graphics that they did, that you're gonna be taking a look at, that are in your packet tonight, that include all of the walkways, which include sidewalks and trails, and bike paths in a map that we can use and that we can update? In order to have a master plan, we actually have to know what we have that's out there. It's similar to what we did, and I know that Mike and others were busy working on the beacons for pedestrian safety. So if it's possible for us to be able to expand and at least while we have their expertise, get them to map this out for us, we can use it in the future when we decide that we're going to, when we have the time to and the resources to do an actual master plan for our transportation. And I'm sure that our new engineer is ready to do that. I know this is part of our, what Parametrics look at, but it's only part. What you're looking at in a large degree is what's going on over on Country Vista on the east side and the west side. And I have addressed some of those issues, too. I just want to remind you that our goal is to move more vehicles, walkers, cyclists, everyone safer, not faster. And I do have some additional information that I'd like to share with whenever we're together on this about the speed limits and how we can make things safer in the future, too. So if it's at all possible, please consider, I know this is a draft tonight, and maybe it's too much to ask, and maybe it's gonna cost too much, but at some time, we need to have some sort of an overall picture of our pedestrian, our bicycle, our, our golf cart, trails that we have, and sidewalks, and where we need to have the improvements. From there, we can move on to what the priorities are for the council to decide in the future. Thank you all very much, I appreciate your listening.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, any other citizen comments? Alright, not hearing any. We will move on to Mayor and Council reports, inquiries. Anything from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Want to report just briefly on a, um, I was on a Zoom on the 13th with Valley Chamber Commerce, they had Chris Ayler, the US Chamber Federal spokesperson for that federal update, he was most informative. Some of the things they touched on was the Paycheck Protection Program, where they, he was saying that it was roughly $541 billion allocated, and all, all about $110 billion has been put out, that's still available. And what I was surprised about was their, their comment was that they did not feel that that remaining $110 billion would be tapped into. And yet, what's being proposed, uh, the federal level, is extending that and bringing on another four or 500 billion. And then they also announced that there's being proposed that loans under $110,000 would be forgiven. But I think there's gonna be a lot of fall into that category. So it was an interesting, interesting meeting, that was all I had.
Okay. Any other citizen or council comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make an inquiry.
Go ahead.
Will you be updating us anytime soon on stage two and what's allowed and what's not allowed? Seems to be some confusion now, especially with some of our businesses, about what can be accomplished during phase two as opposed to waiting for three?
Uh, yeah, we'll, uh, work on getting something out, but in the short of it, if you haven't heard, there are some modifications to phase three to include the decrease from 50 people meeting down to 10. There's an extension on face-to-face meetings as well, with the request that we do Zoom meetings and continue those. The probability of us getting into phase three in the near future is very slim as our numbers have increased dramatically. Uh, we're currently at countywide, 2,890 cases. Um, until we start seeing some flatlining with that, we won't be moving to phase three for quite some time.
Thank you, sir.
You are welcome. Okay, any other counsel? Okay, I have a few items I wanted to go over. Uh, one of those, I wanted to recognize a young lady named Amelia Allen, and I got permission from her mother first to read this little story about Amelia. And it was right around the 4th of July that she shared this, and I was intending on discussing it at our last council meeting, but we got caught up in some other things. So, um, Amelia, uh, the night of the 4th of July, said it was her favorite 4th of July she ever has had or celebrated in her life. Amelia is a younger gal. Her mom was ecstatic to hear that, especially in the environment that we're in, with everything going on. So they asked her what made us so good, and she shared it, that it's not about, and I'm using her words, uh, it's not about what we do, but who we are with. It's not about packing the day full of many activities, but about taking it all in and being in the moment. Last night, which would have been the night of the 4th, Emily said, "Mom, there are many good things about COVID. It's made us slow down and really enjoy each moment." Pretty eye-opening and remarkable words of wisdom from a young lady. So I hope we can all embrace those things as we are caught up in the environment that we're in. So thank you, Amelia, for teaching us all a good, valuable lesson during this time. Let's see, so for the DC fly-in, for those of you that are going to participate, it's tomorrow from 12 to 2. If you would like to join, make sure and let the staff know. Uh, Farmer's Market is this weekend. I have a prior obligation, so if there's anybody that would like to be there to work for the Farmer's Market, can you please let Katie know? So she can make sure we know how many people are going to be in there. The bios for our city council, we had put the request out in January, I think it was, at the beginning of the year, to ask everyone to update their bios for our website. If you haven't had a chance to do that yet, please get your information in so we can get those bios updated. Uh, it's great for people in our community to see who's serving, as well as their background. So if you haven't had a chance to do that, please get that in. What else was I gonna do? Oh, um, Rudy's funeral service was, uh, the other night, and I attended it or participated in. It was done via web, got to see a lot of his family and friends. Uh, I shared with his family and friends how much he meant to us as a city. And, uh, on behalf of all the city council and city staff, how grateful we were to have known him and had him be such a major impact in our community. Uh, we heard a lot of great comments from citizens as well. Also, with that being said, on that topic, we are going to postpone the employee luncheon due to the environment that we're in right now. We don't feel that it would be in the best interest of our staff to hold that dirt at this time. So we'll push it out to a later date, if possible. I think that's all the main stuff that I wanted to go over. Uh, let's do the city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. Have quite a few things and other people participating, so we'll kind of go fairly quickly. We wanted the council to know that Spokane County is looking at a mental health crisis facility. And this is a facility that, in Spokane, for those individuals that interact with law enforcement that have mental health situations, this would be a facility that would tend to their need. We know that the county wants to reach out to all of you, all our council members, and they have a plan and a strategy that they're working on. And so at some point, we will be bringing more information back to you. But right now, we just wanted you all to know that, you know, mental health in our community and mental health in Liberty Lake is something that we should all have an awareness about and also an understanding that there's a potential facility that needs him online. So with that, I'm gonna ask Chief Asmus to give us an update on the solar equipment. Last week, or last council meeting, I think Councilmember Kurtz asked for an update.
Hey, Katie, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We've got data on our solar panel project, and that is, as you know, it was a what they're not functioning, um, battery backup solution to our building. So we contacted a company called PCI Renewables, who was recommended by Avista to look at our solar panel system. They've been out a few times and done some evaluation and troubleshooting. Uh, their last visit last week, they were able to do some reprogramming of one of the power inverters that was failing. And the work that they've done, it appears to have fixed the failing power inverter. Uh, myself and Todd tried to test the system after the power inverter was fixed. But we were not smart enough to figure out how to test the system. So our next step would be to contact a panel electrician that was recommended by PCI Renewables and to walk us through the process of testing our system to see if in fact the battery backups are providing power to those circuits that were dedicated to build the battery backup. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Chief?
Uh, just one question. Uh, Chief, do we know a timeframe on that, is it a week, two weeks, or, do you know?
Yeah, it's just a matter of time, I've been able to give a electrician how to look at the, uh, the system.
Okay, thank you.
I'm guessing it's probably within a week or two.
Thanks.
Other question, so if, uh, if it does work, is this the backup that would allow up to 36 hours for the necessary items that you guys need?
Uh, we think so. Uh, we might be able to get more time out of it, based on what the consultant from PCI Renewables told us. The batteries themselves look like that they are storing a lot of energy, and so they are functional. The solar panels are also functioning at a very high level for them being 10 years old. What would happen is that the 36 hours that we've been told is the amount of power stored in the current batteries that we have. But what we did not take into account is that when we have nice sunny days like this week, even if the power is out, the solar panels will continue to charge those batteries, even if there's power outage to the building. So it could potentially last longer than that 36 hours.
Thank you.
That question was from Councilmember Kurtz. Any other questions or comments for the chief? Yes, Councilmember Langford.
Yes, I don't know if the time is apropos or not, but what I would like to suggest, especially since Chris isn't with us tonight, and I understand that she would probably not get involved anyway. However, I would like to request you to ask the city staff to please get us some quotes from the TierPoint and regarding what it would take to make sure that we have backup on our servers with them.
Is it different?
Just to clarify, Councilmember Langford, the backup on our server is what TierPoint would back up? I'm looking at our IT guy, not the... Todd, do you want to explain what TierPoint can back up?
We don't use TierPoint for our backup. We use a cloud service for our backup.
Um, our IT, just for point of clarification, we're gonna have our IT person kind of clarify our network name.
Yeah, right now, it's, our backup is the exchange server, which holds our email, and our file servers. We have a backup that runs constantly on another server here at City Hall, and then that's backed up into the cloud. Uh, we don't use TierPoint as our backup facility. So that's my answer, any other questions?
So the power generator, excuse me, what the chief updated us on was the power backup to run the facility when there's a power outage, as opposed to a backup to our server, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that is, that is why I'm requesting that we just get a quote and see how much it would cost for us to use the other facility for disaster backup and for our backup of our servers.
Can I get a motion for that?
I would motion, I would make a motion.
This is Councilmember Severs, I've got another question first.
Go ahead.
I guess my question, so if I'm hearing correctly, Todd, we're, um, we're already backed up to the cloud?
Yeah, that's correct.
So why do we need additional, what's the rationale for an additional backup service provider? Uh, Odin?
Because we have a city at stake, and I trust the cloud completely for my personal use. However, I'm not interested in doing the people's business on the cloud, especially if we're trying to do a disaster restore.
Todd, who's, who is our cloud backup server?
Uh, right now, we use, uh, StorageCraft is our backup. And it's through Executech.
So, so this is the opinion that we needed. Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, Hugh, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Dan.
Um, I think I heard StorageCraft Solutions, I think a reference name of a provider of a service to the city. And I think Odin, man, Odin, I think what you're suggesting is that we replace StorageCraft with TierPoint. I think that's what I heard.
That's, that's accurate, Dan, thank you.
So that, I guess I'd say as kind of unrelated to the power issues that we're having right now.
Correct.
Perhaps that.
No, you're 100% correct. Regarding anything to do with the backup power at the police department, it was just an opportunity to discuss this without Chris being present who works there, and to try to get a motion moving in that direction, to at least get a quote.
Councilmember Severs, you're... Did you have anything else, Councilmember Severs?
Nope, nope, I'm in agreement. I'm in agreement with the second on the table, I think.
I saw Kennedy's hand up next.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm thinking of is, I remember we were talking about the generator. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there were three issues here. One, to provide electricity to the building. Uh, two, to provide air conditioning with electricity. And also, in the event that the server went out, that we'd have power to operate that server. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't your recommendation, Odin, that look at, instead of worrying about having power or backup power to operate the server, if something like that is transferred over to TierPoint or some other organization, that that eliminates one of the three criteria for spending a lot of money for a generator?
Well, Mike, what I'm, what I'm actually trying to get done is just to ensure that we have proper backups, that we have professional reload capabilities. We're dealing with a company that's in our backyard, they do a national service, and it's really unrelated to the power to keep them running or not. They would still need the power from a backup source to continue to run. I'm merely addressing the storage.
Okay.
So they're really two separate entities because we haven't, uh, we basically stopped the process on the backup, or rather, the generator piece, because you guys want to wait till we get through this process. So the generator piece would be a separate topic. If you guys wanted us to move forward with that piece. So let's stick to what we have in front of us. Councilmember Langford, I believe, you got a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we review the possibility of going with TierPoint for professional storage of our data.
Can I have your second?
I'll check it down.
Okay, we got a second, I believe, Annie, I apologize, I saw your hand up.
That's okay, I, what's the difference between what we have today and what TierPoint offers?
They would basically offer the same, uh, we would just have to look at the cost.
This is Hugh, if I could have a comment.
Go ahead.
I, uh, I agree with the, just the sheer fact of, um, going out and looking at other options and see if there's something we're missing. And I really love the idea of using a local company, but I think if we're gonna look at a proposal from TierPoint, we should probably shop this out just a little bit and say, what are the... we should probably shop this out just a little bit and say, what are the solutions that are out there? How does it compare to what we have today? How's TierPoint compare? And is there something else out there that might be even better? And I really don't know what the answer is. I'm just, if we're going to shop it out, we should shop it out.
Any other comments from the council?
One question.
Is what we have today broke?
We don't know all that. Well, there's two things. The question is, is our backup power broke? Or is our backup to our server broke? What are you referring to?
I think the motion refers to backup to our server.
I'm getting a no indication from our IT.
Thank you.
He's saying no, it's not broken.
So it's coming down to cost? Or is there a certain level of service that we expect that's above what we are already getting?
That's correct.
Okay, no further comments. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nays have it? Okay, moving on, Katie.
Okay. So sometimes with COVID, you need a sense of humor. Some are called it the COVID prod thing. PPE for our businesses, we continue to distribute those products. It has slowed down, but we do have products available, which includes blogs, cleaning equipment, masks to distribute. We also, last Friday, handed out masks to our residents and what we like. We distributed those from night until morning till 3:00. We distributed approximately, I believe it was 60 boxes, and there's 50 in each box. So we had some very happy citizens that drove by and picked up masks. I would like to say that part of, it was an older group, you know, a lot of older citizens and older residents that we have were the recipients of those boxes of masks. We tried to do another one. We're not sure when, but it'll probably be a few weeks out. We'll get some masks and have a second distribution. Just a reminder that we are purchasing these items with the CareZak dollars. Cleaning of city services and protocols continues with COVID, with CareZak dollars. That includes our police station, our library, our city hall, our park restroom, all of our city facilities and our equipment are cleaned on a regular basis. Phase question came up. I think Councilmember Langford had a question. We're in phase two. As Mayor said, we had a meeting this morning. We don't know when we'll be out of phase two. But suffice it to say that based on the numbers that we see, probably going to be a while. And we're kind of here at City Hall looking at the month of August still being in phase two at this point. Hopefully, we're wrong, but that's kind of where we are right now. And there was some pullback, as was mentioned, on phase three, on the amount of people that could get there. On events, I'm going to touch on just a few. We had a chance to talk with the Health District on Friday, and we covered with them an idea that came out of a lot of smart people's minds, and it's something called chalk walk. So this would be an opportunity that in our community, people could use chalk to make art on their sidewalks and then walk around the neighborhood and look at other people's art. Kiwanis is, I'm going to let Dan jump in and share how Kiwanis is going to participate. And I do want to mention that this is pretty unstructured, but it's an opportunity for people in our community to get outside and do some fun things. So Dan, I'll ask you to fill us in on what Kiwanis is doing.
Just for our work, we recognize, number one, enabling people to get out in their own, I'd say driveways and sidewalks, do something amazing, but we'd like to sponsor maybe a featured artist to be able to go into one of the public spaces in the city and create something amazing. So the, yeah, the Kiwanis Club would be happy to sponsor a featured artist for a couple of locations to look at something cool. I think also, just as a secondhand observation, we're going to also, you know, have a procession or walking, you know, amongst places where these installations have occurred. And that, I think, is the other thing that's good about this event, is that we get people, I'd say, just out and moving. And that's important for everybody in pandemic times when we've been asked to stay put, just to stay reasonably, in a good social distancing way, to get out and to walk about. Not to linger, don't take too long, but get out there and walk. That's what I've heard.
Yes, Councilmember Dan, thank you for those comments. And that was one of the big reasons that our Health District was supportive of this, is that it's continuous motion, where people aren't stagnant in one area for any given extended amount of time. So they were very much supportive of that opportunity.
And for its timing, it would be this Saturday before Labor Day, so we have a good month or a good five weeks before this event would be held. So again, there are a lot of good ideas coming together, and Anita is going to help us get the message out to our community. The other two events that are still being discussed at this point is the cornhole tournament over at Orchard Park at the end of August, and then the symphony, we should know, I heard Thursday, whether or not they are going to be available. So as soon as we have more information, we'll let you know. And I know Jen is on the Zoom meeting, so Jen, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you covered it. But yeah, we should know more on the symphony here in a few days. But the truck and walk event should be a really fun event and actually something fun to look forward to for the citizens.
I will add one thing in relation to the events. I spoke with Annie and Denise, who are the individuals who put on the Liberty Lake Parade during the Fourth, as well as the fireworks. And as I discussed with you guys at our last meeting, they were potentially looking at the weekend that the symphony would be playing. In light of where we're at, they have decided to postpone, or not postpone, cancel those for this year. So there will be no parade that weekend or fireworks.
Okay, so moving along, we have a financial update. This is not just related to COVID, but it's just a general financial update from RJ.
I do, two items are related to COVID. We did invoice last month the Department of Commerce for $22,000 in costs that we incurred for salaries up to that point. We did get reimbursed for Commerce last week on that. We should have another invoice going out to Commerce in that $40,000 range for expenses and salaries related to COVID. And we expect to turn around to be about 10 days to get that money back to us. In relation, we did get our property tax, July 10th was the latest property tax collection, and we did receive, the amount that we received puts us right on par where we should be. So we're reading expectations to collect our full property tax by year end, not knowing what the next, the second half of the year pans out. At least for the first half, we collected what we were expecting to collect in property taxes. The sales tax data, I will, I should get, it will be May's numbers here by the end of this week. So by the next council meeting, I'll have an update, which will have two months' worth of data related to how COVID affected businesses in the area. And then we are starting to get in our budget process. We've actually been working on it. One of the things I will be sharing with council in an email there this week is the budget calendar proposed for 2021. One of the items I do want you to consider on there is if we should still do the mayor budget questions. And the reason I bring it up, at least from my quantity, why we were doing, the first two years we were doing it, we were having about an average of 30 different questions from those. But the last two years, that has waned down. So two budget cycles ago, there was only 13 questions, and then last year, we only had one budget question from that process. And I don't want to create something and remind, we don't want to do that process and more want to do it through the workshops that we have had in budgets in the past. So I'm asking to consider, do you still want the mayor budget questions? If not, we'll get rid of them. And we have two new council members that might be an option. It's just a, it's a formal question process, so that you can ask a question, and then we'll fully bet out the answer and share it with all council and the general public.
For Councilmember Foyer and Councilmember Kurtz, you would be getting the financial packet for 2021 beforehand to skim through, and that would be your opportunity after that to ask questions regarding the budget, where you'd send the questions in to RJ, and he would respond with his answers. How we did it last year, we did a lot more discussions as we walked through the budget, where we kind of took it section by section.
So I do want to clarify, I'm not saying that you wouldn't be able to ask the questions.
Yeah.
I'm not getting rid of questions.
Yeah, you can definitely still ask questions. It's a matter of, does the council want to continue with the, that option? Or do we want to go with more of what we did last year?
So that's for you to ponder. If you have feedback now, I appreciate it. If not, we can follow up on the next meeting, and that is all I have to report.
You want to comment now?
Yes, you can make a comment now if you want.
Yeah, my comment would be is that I would encourage both. For the simple reason, I think it's been very effective this last year and the year before, where we get into more of the discussion. But I think it's also beneficial that we encourage council members to always send in questions when they think of them versus waiting for everything to come out and then start looking at it. It's just another avenue for council members to be involved and ask the questions early, because I think that stimulates additional questions.
I agree with Councilmember Kennedy. It's a great point.
Okay. Councilmember Langford, any comments on that?
No, I agree with Mike and Hugh that it makes good sense just to keep it.
Okay. Councilmember Dan?
I've never had a problem getting questions answered, and I'm happy to share the questions that I've got with anybody else. I'm good with the MBQ format.
Okay. Councilmember Foyer, I saw your hand pop up. You're good to go with that? Is that your sign?
That's a good yes, yes, good.
Okay, thank you. That's what I figured, but I didn't want to assume. And Annie?
Good, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And that does bring up a topic that I do want to kind of mention. As we go through this process, not only with the budget, but other items, it's going to be important to get your guys' full engagement on it, because it helps us prepare for the future, whether it's the budget and MBQs or polls that we do for the retreat, questionnaires, things to that effect. We really, really need to get you guys engaged as much as possible, so we understand your guys' thoughts moving forward. So I look forward to your comments and questions.
Okay, employee recruitment. We have a number of positions that are open, but I want to take this opportunity to introduce Ben Schmidt. He's on our Zoom meeting. Ben, you're not on my screen, but I'm assuming he's on someone else's screen. Ben started a week and a half ago. He's being sat by immersion, we call it, because it's a pretty rapid amount of work that he's already taken under his belt. Ben, did you want to say a few words or a word or two about your background?
Yes, absolutely. Just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, Katie, and Lisa, for bringing me on board and council, and to the rest of the citizens who are listening. I really look forward to getting to meet you all and get to learn about why you took this position and why you're interested in the city and how I can help make it better. I come from a pretty diverse background of public and private sector experience, from oil field to utilities to civil construction, from Colorado, Idaho, and Washington, and really enjoy the public sector. The city is gorgeous, and it's really well-built. And so far, all the people that we've met here have been really friendly and intelligent, and it was just a really attractive position for that reason. So, yeah, I'm really looking forward to continuing jumping in, and if you have any comments, please feel free to reach out anytime. I'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, and welcome, Ben. I'm sure we have a meeting in... Ben was more than happy to come and share some information about some of the projects and provide updates in the next couple of weeks. I interrupted someone. I apologize.
No, just welcome, Ben. It's great to have you here. Welcome.
Lisa, is there anything that you wanted to add on Ben?
Just that we are, just that we're thrilled to have him on board, that he's been a real asset to the city. He's already proven his worth.
I don't know if you all caught that, but Lisa said he's proving his worth, and we really enjoy having Ben in our office. Okay, moving along, what we did want you to know is we still have the hiring freeze, so to speak, in place, but we do have some vacant positions, and I just wanted to mention what those are. One is our building inspector. Another is a permit technician, excuse me, it's a technician associate.
Planning and engineering associate, so.
Planning and engineering technician, correct. And then those recruitments are underway, and I believe Chief is exploring the option of retaining another police officer. So that's in the works as well. So we still have recruitment underway, but again, to fill vacant positions. So I want to move on to Harvard and Henry. Every council meeting, it seems like we give you an update on this. The BIS for Harvard Road opened tomorrow, so tomorrow we will know what the BIS results are. We still don't know whether or not Warstar is going to move forward with awarding the BIS, but as soon as we know, we will keep you posted. BIS are coming in good right now, and so we're hopeful that our project comes in at or below the engineer's estimate. And then on Henry Road, we're beyond the 30%. We're actually looking at, we're moving into the next phase of the design development of that project. Things are going well. It's pretty intense, and I know we're meeting with the design consultant tomorrow at 9:00 o'clock. So things are going well there. If you read the paper yesterday, there was a little art upon the project. And what I also wanted you to know is that Barker is going to start construction. It's going to be nighttime construction on July 27th. So I can strongly encourage all of you to avoid Barker in the next couple of weeks. It's going to be night work, and they're going to be building around about on the north side and the south side. And I don't believe we know which side they're going to be building first. Does Chief, do you know?
I don't.
We don't know, but Barker's going to be at construction for the next couple of weeks, starting next week, and you might want to avoid that area. Council retreat, so this is the next item on my report. We really wanted to find out from council what the pleasure, what your pleasure is regarding the retreat. Something that we wanted to share with you is that Avista is reaching out and has reached out, I think to some of you, and gone back to them, and are preparing for the retreat. It's currently scheduled for August 2nd. And they have let us know that if the retreat is indoors, that they would not be able to facilitate that retreat. They could facilitate it if we had it outdoors. They did offer to provide us a facilitator, but that they would not be able to facilitate an indoor retreat. So we did explore another location outdoors, and that would be, if the council's pleasure is to have it outdoors, it would be, we could have it at Meadowhead Technology. They have cafeteria, aside, and bathrooms and the like. So Mayor, is there anything else that... We still need to put the agenda together. A lot of work to do between now and August 2nd. We really wanted the council to provide us some feedback on what direction they wanted to go regarding the retreat.
So regarding the retreat, I would like to hear from everybody and what your thoughts are on postponing the retreat or having it in the environment that Katie discussed.
Mrs. Oden, postpone.
Councilmember Dan?
You know, this one's tough. I'll wax my current experience. I recently got invited to some house party kind of experiences, to which I carefully consider current circumstances, and I opted out. I think it'd be very difficult for us to try and have the levels of interaction, I'm going to say, hopefully, trust and vulnerability that that interaction would create in that sort of distance standoffish way. In that regard, I'm good with a postpone.
Okay. Councilmember Foyer?
Did I hear you say outdoors?
Yeah, so there's a kind of a pavilion area next to Meadowwood. It's an outdoor seating area.
Large picnic shelter.
Like a large picnic shelter, if you will.
With AC?
No, AC. And I will, Foyer, Councilmember Kurtz, you weren't around at this time, but we had tried to do an outdoor meeting a while back, and between the wind and everything else, it made it very difficult. Papers were flying everywhere. We couldn't hear each other very well. So it's hard to predict the weather, as we all know, around here. So hence why we wanted to bring up the option to postpone it to when we could all meet face to face. So with that being said, Councilmember Foyer, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I would concur.
Okay. Councilmember Kurtz?
I'm fine with postponing of it. My only impetus to move forward with it is that we have some topics that we've kind of been, that I want to talk about. I want to kind of start working on some of this stuff. So I feel like we've set a lot of topics off for the retreat that I don't want to not ever talk about them if COVID never gets better. So if there's a way to balance that, like having some workshops for us or continue to talk about some of those issues. But I'm all for safety and people being comfortable and echo what everybody else said on the postponing part.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Well, I'm still in favor of whenever we can get it done, let's get it done. But I also realize that logistics to try to pull this off is almost near impossible. There's no way I would support being outside. I think it'd be anti-productive for all of us to try to stay focused. If we're going to be out there for six hours, he'll get upset because he doesn't get his air conditioning if we're outside. So if it has to be postponed, it has to be postponed. I agree, though, with Annie. I think Annie's trying to make a very good point that I think there are a few things on here that we need to be addressing. The golf course, you know, there's City Hall, things that I don't think we can keep pushing down the road. We need to figure out something, what we're going to do there. But also, I'm apprehensive to try to get into the subject of those two items on Zoom, because I think it's very difficult to have an open discussion. But if we have to postpone it, we postpone it.
Councilmember Reivers?
Uh, yeah, I struggle because I really want to hammer down these subjects. But out of respect for other council members who I'd agree, I think we've just got to postpone it. I don't think outside's going to be productive. Like, I don't think inside's going to be any more productive with the measures we're going to take. So I hate to say it, but I think we ought to postpone. I wonder about, to Councilmember Kurtz's point, I wonder if we could do at least, you know, if we could stomach, you know, a couple of hour and a half workshop-type forums that are outside to talk through a couple of the items that we really need to get talked about. I don't know if outside's the right venue, but, you know, an hour and a half behind a face mask inside may be just fine rather than six hours of doing it. So maybe we could kick that around over the next week or so. If council members could throw some ideas towards our city clerk about how we might, how and which, how we might do it and which topics they feel are pressing priorities, but let's postpone the retreat.
Okay. So with that being said, we will look at postponing it. I still would highly, highly the survey that was sent to each and every one of you regarding the topics that are your kind of top three areas of discussion, because that can help guide us to what topics really need to be discussed sooner versus later. So please make sure you get that done, so we understand what are your top areas that you want to go over.
I'd like to offer, perhaps, Mayor, when we get the rankings back, we bring them back to our next council meeting on August 4th, and we can identify workshops on the highest priority areas. How's that, like if Trailhead is the number one priority, they would schedule a workshop for Trailhead? Does that, does that work?
Councilmember Kennedy, you have your hand up?
No, I'm in favor of that, but I would like to go one step further. I know everybody's encouraged to fill out your top five, 10, or however you want to rate all of these. But I think it's important that all of the council members receives a copy of everybody's response. The simple reason is that we can put them all together and pick the top five or six or seven we want to talk about. But for myself, for example, I may see that Annie or Dan or something like that has a priority bigger than what I think a priority is. But it gives me the opportunity to be able to talk to them and say, you know, if Annie's hot on one item, and I don't think it is, it'd be an opportunity to say, why is that important to you? Why do you think it's important to the citizens? And it'll educate me better to understand what the priority should be.
So if you guys can get those filled out, we will figure out which ones are those top ones and move forward with further discussions on those.
Okay, so moving along. So real quickly, the summer reading program is underway right now. It wraps up August 15th. Farmer's Market is on Saturday. Let me know if any of you are able to come to the city booth. Skyhawk Challenger Fort Camps are currently underway. We don't know if that's going to change or not, but right now they are underway. And FOPP is still kind of on hold in many of the activities. So that wraps up my report. Oh, you know, Mayor, there was one other thing I was going to mention, and I know we're going to be doing a workshop on the network analysis. One of the number one priorities that we have not addressed that you will see in the network analysis is the legacy bridge and Country Vista intersection. And so we did, or we will be executing a task order for an amount not to exceed $4,500 to Parametric. Our, we kind of, time is not on our side here. We have to get our applications in by the middle of August. And so we went ahead and moved forward with a task order so they could apply for a TID grant. As you know, we've been very successful receiving those grants and installing traffic signals in our community. So at this point in time, we're putting the grant application together in August, and we'll find out in November whether or not we were successful in receiving funding for the traffic signal at that location. So Mayor, that concludes my report.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I have one question. Katie, maybe I missed this. Did you cover 7C cities facilities valuation information?
You know, I didn't. That is a subject that we are going to cover in executive session. So I did kind of skim over that. I'll be covering it in an executive session.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the workshop discussion.
So we have with us today Charles Allen, who has been the project lead on our network analysis. And I'd just like to turn over the controls to Charles.
Yeah, I'm going to just go ahead and try and share my screen and see if that does the trick. How's that sound? Let's give this a go. I know last time there was an issue with flickering presentations, so let me know if this is showing up clearly or not. What you should be seeing is the first slide on the presentation. How does that look?
Good.
Looks good.
Okay, great. Well, all right. Well, let's be on our way here. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm glad to be here and present the results of the network analysis update that we've been conducting for many months. I was looking back on my calendar, and the last time I was with you presenting was March 17th. And that was right when everything was just on its way to, you know, shutting down and changing our lives. And, you know, I presented via the internet like today, and that was the beginning of it. Now, since then, we've been doing this all the time. So it's interesting to look back and see how practiced we may be at this now and how we're adapting. Today's presentation is going to cover five topics. Talk about the study area for this report, go through our data collection methods, and then talk about growth assumptions, because it's a pretty important topic when we're trying to predict the future needs of the city. We want to be careful about the growth assumptions we make. Next, I'll present the actual analysis of the report, and that leads into the recommendations. So I have in this presentation some specific slides that are titled "Question Break", where I'll take a pause and check for questions. That worked pretty well last time, because last time this was all via phone for the most part, and so it was difficult for me to see who might be raising their hand or wants to jump in. We'll do that again. However, now that we're on Zoom, it's a little bit easier for everybody to jump in. So please feel free, jump in with a question anytime. I'm happy to address it. We'll still have the question breaks, but I can, I can jump ahead on the fly. So let me go ahead and make sure, see the slide is not advancing like I would like it to. There we go. Okay. That's what I hoped you were all seeing, but now you are. So that's the outline of today's presentation. So to provide a little context about what we talked about before, the previous presentation was focusing on the Country Vista corridor analysis. And today, we're talking about the network-wide analysis. So the Country Vista analysis was a focused effort that is almost, that can be considered a subset of the network-wide analysis. It focused on the Country Vista corridor. It focused on the short-term conditions, about five years out. And also looked at conditions from a multimodal perspective. So vehicles, pedestrians, cyclists. The network analysis includes the entire city, and we go out plus five years for the short term and then to 2040 for the long term. And as the citywide analysis, it maintains a vehicular focus to see what kind of roadway and intersection transportation projects will be needed by the city for the next several years. This is the study area. We focused on the major roads and intersections within the city as highlighted here, and the gray lines and the small circles are identifying the intersections that were analyzed. In order to understand what is going on, one of the first things we do is collect data. And we collected quite a bit of data. It was a comprehensive intersection and roadway count effort that occurred in November 2019. Seventeen intersections were counted in the AM and PM peak hours and 11 locations, as indicated in the red, on roadways where vehicles were counted for 72 hours. So all this data here, I'm not expecting you to memorize this or digest all of this, but it's meant to show how holistic we were in collecting this data, because good data supports good analysis. It's also helpful to look back and see what's changed with the data. So the previous network analysis was completed in early 2017, and for that analysis, traffic counts were conducted in August 2016. This chart here compares a few of those common locations that were counted both in 2016 and 2019, with the 2016 counts in the blue, I'm sorry, excuse me, in the green, and the 2019 counts in the blue. And these are those roadway counts that were counted for multiple days. So the average number of vehicles that crossed each point during the day is what's indicated in the chart. You know, thousands of vehicles every day. What we see in comparing those two is there's a little bit of growth. Sometimes there's a little bit of a decrease. It's mixed. The biggest increase we see is that very first count on the plot, which is on Country Vista Drive. That makes sense, because that's where we've seen most of the growth in the city in the past couple of years. This is comparing the intersection counts. Previous chart was roadway counts. Here's intersection counts between 2016 and 2019. A similar trend. 2019 is a little bit higher. We've seen more traffic in the past few years. What's interesting to note is that the growth is much more pronounced in the AM than in the PM. And this made more sense to me when I recognized that, okay, well, if we think about the month, the traffic data was collected for the previous days collected in August. Most recently is collected in November. What's different about those two? Well, school's in session. And so we see the effect of, I believe, the effect of school traffic collected in the 2019 data, but not represented in the 2016 data, helps to helps to show a bigger increase in the AM as opposed to the PM. But in general, the trend is we're seeing more traffic than just a few years ago. That takes us to our first question break. Are there any questions about what we've gone over so far that you would like to ask?
Councilmember Foyer?
I just have one question. On the chart with all the little circles and all the numbers, at some point, will you tell us what all those mean?
Yeah, sure. So these are the results of the traffic counts. So this is the number of cars counted at each location and whether they're turning right or left. Maybe you're asking what this actually means for the city. And so we'll use this data to analyze intersections and define the capacity needs, the capacity conditions at each of those intersections. So does that answer your question? These are traffic volume numbers, and we use them to conduct the analysis and decide how well things are functioning.
Charles, this is Katie. I have a question.
Yes?
Phil, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I guess more specifically, just pick on the very top left circle, as I zero in on that. I get the whole arrow straight ahead, take a left, take a right. But what is the first number and the second number represent? Is that the AM and PM? Because they, I know there's, the PM looks like it's in bold, but some of these really don't. So which one is the PM? Which one is the AM?
You're exactly right. The PM is the bold numbers, and the AM are the regular font. And the way it's configured is the PM is always on the outside. So with this resolution, if you can't tell which one's bold and which one's not, just default to the outside being the PM number and the inside being the AM number.
That's helpful. Thank you.
No, while we're at it, I'll point out that down here with these red bars, these represent the roadway counts. And so the red number is the average daily traffic, the average number of vehicles in a 24-hour period that cross that point. And then the numbers in black are the AM and PM peak hour numbers by direction at that same location.
Charles, my question relates to the PM. And we notice as we drive around town, our rush hour, so to speak, starts about 3:30 with school, starts heading out. What is the hours of the PM? So what are the hours of the AM?
It depends. It can depend from location to location. For this data, I believe is generally, you know, around 4:15 to 5:15. But, you know, that can vary a little bit. I can't remember the exact times off the top of my head. But we try to be consistent about picking a similar time for each of these 17 intersections to represent in this graphic.
So it's a measure of about an hour?
Yes, yeah. It's an hour time period for the peak. When we say AM and PM peak, we're talking about a one-hour period.
Thank you.
Question?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are these counts done where you're physically there doing the count? Or is this where you have the strip across the road?
Well, the ones marked in red across the roadway, those can be done with a strip. A lot of times now, we're moving to setting up video equipment, recording video, and then processing the results after by watching the video. And that's how the intersections were done as well. You know, video cameras were installed at the corners of the intersection, and then the video was counted.
Thank you.
So next on the discussion is to talk about background improvements. And the reason I mentioned this is because the world is always changing. And we have to make sure we account for projects that are pending or underway and how they influence the transportation network. Make sure analysis accounts for that. So these are the background improvements that were significant to the analysis and were included at various stages, whether it's, you know, short-term or long-term conditions as being complete. New signals on Appleway at Signal Drive in Madsen, and a new signal is assumed to be installed at the new high school location, that Country Vista Drive. And then the Harvard Road Bridge widening, including the northbound lane, that was incorporated as part of the background conditions. We'll talk in a little bit more detail about that. In addition to the westbound, extra westbound right turn lane going in at the Liberty Lake Road and Appleway intersection. So we'll talk a little bit about these later, but it's just So we'll talk a little bit about these later, but it's just important to note that, you know, short term or pending projects will get kind of folded into our our short term con- conditions. So on to short term growth assumptions. You may recall from our, our country Vista Drive presentation, we worked closely with city staff to get an understanding of what kind of developments is pending or planned or approved for you know, undeveloped areas of the city and what's likely to, to come in in the next five years. So, so we underwent that process to understand that and that included talking directly with staff about developments they're aware of or have been talked about in addition to looking at the land uses that are planned for in, you know, the city zoning and the, the comprehensive plan. And, and getting a holistic look at, okay, how much is likely to come in so that we can include the traffic that would be created or generated by the new development in our short term analysis. The next step was to take the understanding of expected development in the next five years and convert that into the traffic load that will then distribute throughout the, the transportation system. So this exercise is conducted doing a process called trip generation and distribution. So there are studies done nationwide that develop trip generation rates for certain land uses. So if you, if you have a commercial unit coming in, maybe it has office space, you can take the square footage of the office space coming in, multiply it by a trip generation rate and it gives you an estimate of how many trips that office will, will develop, will produce. So this table shown, here's a snippet of the trip generation calculations that we went through for all these developments expected to the next five years. And that produces, you know, a number at the end, a number of trips coming in and out during the AM peak hour, the PM peak hour and in the daily total. And with that trip generation, then we conducted a trip distribution exercise where we distribute those trips throughout the transportation network. Because one office may generate a certain amount of trips, but those trips are going to affect more than just the road that's directly in front of the office building. It's going to affect potentially several other roads throughout the city, depending on the, the path of those trips. So after distributing all those new trips into the system, we then had our estimate of short term traffic volumes. So this is similar graphic as the existing volumes, but now all those new trips have been added to the system. So again, you know, we could look at each of these numbers and see that some of them are higher than for existing conditions analysis because of, of new development area. Again, the, the point of showing this isn't to really digest every single number, but it's to show that this is the data behind the intersection analysis. Long-term growth assumptions are a little bit of a different animal. Because we're going so far out, there's less certainty about what's happening, but there's also different tools available to us. The Spokane Regional Transportation Council maintains a region-wide traffic forecasting tool called the Travel Demand Model. And this model is a representation of the entire area from, you know, area heights to Liberty Lake. And it takes inputs of land use and the transportation network and runs through algorithms to develop forecasts for how many trips will occur on roads throughout the entire region. So thereby we can get our first crack at what kind of traffic volumes we might expect in the year 2040. This, this particular model goes all the way out to the year 2040. Now, these models are built on a region scale. So when we apply them to a smaller study area like our study area, we often adapt these models so that they're a little bit more refined and a little bit more accurate for, for our use. So we took the model and we worked with city staff to, to dissect what kind of land uses it's assuming for the city in 2040 and see if those needed to be adjusted or refined. And we also made road network refinements because the region-wide model may not have as much detail for the city of Liberty Lakes roads as we would like to use for our study. So, so we refine that. And then at the, at the back end of that, we ran them on, we ran some statistics to see, did we make the model more accurate for our purposes by making those changes? And aggression, regression statistics support the refinements that we've made. So turning through the model, we can then take the outputs and use them to develop our 2040 traffic volumes that we, that are the basis for the long-term analysis. So here are the 2040 traffic volumes at all the same intersections that we use for the process of determining what kind of projects may be needed in the year 2040. So that brings us to our next question break. What, what questions do you have about what I've shared so far?
Charles, Mike Kennedy here. Could you go back to that last screen? Okay. Help me understand here. I'm, I'm looking at on Mission Road where at this, at the east end of Mission, right by the storage. There's a traffic count there. Traffic count 280 and then 200. And then at the west end, just before the the construction there, the numbers are quite a bit different. That's a road that only goes east and west with no turnoffs, north and south. Why would the, why would the numbers be different?
Well, there's no turnoffs today. But by 2040, there's lots of planned development for this area. And that would turn on and off. Did, and did I catch the areas where you're talking about correctly?
So this is a guess limit, anticipated up to 2040.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Oden Langford. Could you go back to the part where you were showing us how you generated trips? Or analytical trips? There, you talked about having calculations for up to five years of different businesses coming in? Is that what I heard?
That's right, yes.
And how do you, how do you base your judgment on what type of businesses will be coming in at what locations? And whether they generate a lot of traffic or less traffic?
Yeah, in, in some instances, we have a lot of detail about what's going in. For example, the high school and the residential units going to get next to it. In that case, it's, it's very very direct method to pick the trip generation rate for a high school, which is published as well as multifamily residential units. In areas where the exact type of development that's going to occur is less certain, then we have to apply more assumptions. So for example, if all we know is that the, the area is likely to develop as commercial, then we make some assumptions about, well, let's, let's let's assume, you know, half of it is office and half of it is, is a retail. And with that level of detail, we can go in and pick a trip generation rate for an office and then one for, you know, a shopping center.
Thank you. It's good. You, you hit just exactly what I was wondering about. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So the less we know, the more assumptions we have to make. And it's, it's good to keep in mind that this is an estimating process, but we're using as much certainty as, we're using as much data as we, we can and is available to us. Okay, on to the analysis. The main basis of intersection analysis is a process that calculates and defines intersection level of service. Or LOS, level service, you may have seen this before. It's a way to grade intersection performance on an A to F scale. A being the best, F being the worst. And the images on the right are a representation of loosely of what that level service A to F means. A means there's very little impedance to move through the road or through an intersection. And F represents breakdown where you have to wait multiple cycles to get through an intersection. Unlike school, where if you, you bring home a D to your parents, you might get scolded. Level service D is okay in the traffic world. Because that represents conditions where it's, it's busy, but vehicles are able to get through the intersections, mostly clearing each green light. And also keeping in mind that level service is usually analyzed for the peak hour or sometimes the peak 15 minutes of the entire day. So if the worst type of traffic you get during the whole day is level service D, you're not too bad. It's a good way to balance mobility with infrastructure investments. You build too much to get level service A everywhere, then you have roads that are hardly used all the rest of the day. So keep that in mind, level service D is okay. When we, when you hit ENF, it often triggers a, a point where we look and see, okay, are there improvements that are beneficial to this intersection that we'd recommend?
Question, Charles?
Yes.
You mentioned the word impedance, but is there a unit associated with the numbers on the chart?
Yes, there is. Average delay per vehicle in seconds.
Thank you.
So at a signalized intersection, if the average person waits 15 seconds to get through, then your level service B. Getting up to 55 seconds, you know, close to a minute, then you start to edge toward that level service E and F.
Cool.
Using our existing count data, this is the level service at the city intersections for AM and PM peak hours. The AM is on the left side of the circle and the PM level service is on the right side of the circle. So we're seeing, you know, As, Bs and Cs, and we do have a, a rogue D here at Liberty Lake and Appleway. But going back to those background improvement assumptions, we know that there is going to be a project here adding a second westbound right turn lane. So that will provide some improvement to the intersection. And then moving on to short-term conditions, we start to see with the growth that we have some intersection failure, as we call it. Level service F at the country Vista Drive intersection and the, the Henry Road intersection over on Country Vista Drive. So those are the, the two major problem areas that, that we see arising the short-term conditions now. You know, going back to those background assumptions, we're assuming in the, in this situation that the Henry Road Bridge is constructed. We're assuming that this intersection for this, for the purpose of this analysis remains an unsignalized intersection. But that the Mission intersection is constructed as a roundabout because those are the the plans underway for design. So without adding a traffic signal here, we'll, we'll see level service F. Now moving on to long-term conditions, again, this is without, without doing anything other than those, those background assumptions that we made. The country Vista Drive intersections remain level service F. We just see that the, the Mission Harvard roundabouts start to have level service F in the PM peak hour. And the country Vista Drive Appleway remains level service D, but the aim starts to get a little bit worse. It wasn't D before. So with that understanding, what we're going to, we, what we can expect to see short-term and long-term, we have some recommendations. So for the short-term recommendations, they include new signals on Country Vista Drive at the Henry Road, should be part of the bridge project and at Legacy Ridge Drive, which we've talked about earlier in this meeting. And the table below shows the level of service, how that performs for both the short term and the long term. So with the signal in place, both of these intersections do well in the short term, and then they also continue to do well in the long term. So these improvements will, should last for, for quite some time. And then the other recommendation is the, the roundabout at the Henry Road Mission intersection. This also will be constructed as part of the bridge project and our analysis that a single lane roundabout should work just fine. Again, this also will function well through 2040. And in addition to that, we ran a sensitivity analysis, assuming a fourth leg is added to the, to the roundabout in the future at some time as development occurs, just to test and make sure the roundabout will work okay. And it does, it'll work okay with the fourth leg according to to our sensitivity analysis. Any questions about those short-term recommendations or anything else we've discussed today?
Councilmember Langford.
Yes, Mr. Allen, go back to the short term on the road, let's see, with the suggested signals. The signals, right. I know that you, we're, we're talking about the amount of delay that vehicles have getting through an intersection that prompts the use of signals or not. However, if we put one at Henry Road, put another one at Legacy. Has anyone thought about how much delay will cause because by the two lights? Being so close to each other?
So, so you're, it sounds like your question is, do we expect to have problems arising from those signals being too close, not having much spacing between?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, what we have there is they'll be about, I believe, a quarter mile apart. And that's about as close as you'd like them on a major road like Country Vista Drive. So you, you wouldn't want to go any closer. And the, the fact that there aren't any signals for maybe another half mile either direction. That helps because if you had several that were just a quarter mile, then you might start to have some problems, but I don't expect that a quarter mile spacing for these two would introduce too many problems.
Would you be suggesting that they put on the same time? That they're both running red or green at the same time or how?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm a big fan of that. I think any traffic engineer will, will say yes, synchronize things.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'll talk about long-term analysis. This is just a refresher. We've seen this graphic before. This is what long-term looks like if, if we don't do anything. We just discussed that those short-term improvements here at Henry and, and Country Vista Drive will improve level service all the way through the long term. So again, this graphic is showing no improvements. But our lingering problem here at Mission Harvard Roundabouts is something that we explored. It's a, it's a roundabout today. And as it starts to get more congested in the future, expanding the roundabout to have two lanes, north and southbound will improve operations at the roundabout quite a bit. So two lanes, north and south, and then adding east, west, right turn lanes for those approaches at the roundabout is our recommendation to address the capacity needs of the future. And as shown in the table below, the level service is expected to be F in 2040 without the improvements. But with improvements, we're able to achieve level service D. So things start to work a lot better at the roundabout if we give it that extra capacity. Now the two lanes, north, south, and then just the basically kind of a one lane approach, east, west, plus the right turn lanes fits in well, pretty well with the surrounding network. These are aerial images of the roundabouts. So moving to the north, you could see how you know, Harvard does have two lanes each direction, close to the roundabout or at the roundabout. So it shouldn't be too difficult to expand these approaches and create the two receiving lanes for northbound and, and create a two lane approach for southbound. The surrounding roadway would support that pretty well. On the south side of the roundabout, it's a little bit more challenging. There are not two receiving lanes or two approach lanes coming to the roundabout, but we do know that the, the, the Harvard Bridge project will add a second northbound lane up to this split point. So there's a couple of different options on, on how we could carry a second lane all the way to the roundabout. You know, open up another lane after the split point or just continue that second lane all the way to the roundabout. That's, that's one option to do it. Southbound is a little bit trickier because of the lane split right here, a very short distance. Southbound is a little bit trickier because of the lane split right here, a very short distance after the roundabout. So so there are some options. You know, the two lanes could be carried and then one splits off to the ramp and one continues. That's a fairly short distance if people have to, you know, weave and change lanes in between exiting the roundabout and getting to the split. Or the second southbound line could be carried farther south of the split and then merge back into one lane across the bridge before the bridge. There there's options that are doable and but more detail analysis will be needed as we get closer to to this actual project. So from a high level, this recommendation should work. There are some options on how to tie those two lanes into the surrounding network, and that'll need to be explored further. Talked a little bit about the Liberty Lake Road, Appleway Avenue intersection and how overall intersection level service is a D in 2040. It's okay. But if we take a closer look at the individual movements, specifically the left turns, we can see that those individual movements start to have problems. So the chart shows level service for the left turns, northbound left, southbound left, eastbound left, westbound left, and the amount of delay experienced by each of those individual movements and the ninety-fifth percentile queue length. So about how far back the queues get on a given AM or PM peak hour. So we see lots of lots of level service F for all the the left turn lanes. So we've explored some options and found that adding a second southbound left turn lane to the intersection provides quite a bit of benefit. It directly benefits the southbound left by providing more queue storage and more capacity to move left turns through the intersection. But then there's some residual residual benefit for the rest of the intersection as the it allows some green time to be distributed to other movements. So the table on the bottom shows level service for those same left turn movements after a second southbound left is added to the intersection. So this will provide some some good improvements for flow at the intersection. Another reason why the southbound left would be a pretty good option is because you like to have the intersection mirror itself on the opposite side of the intersection. And so that lanes line up well, you know, lanes approaching the intersection, receiving lanes on the other side. And because of the median on the south side, there's an opportunity to have two left turn lanes on the on the southbound leg, meaning the north side that that allow the through lanes to still match up to each other and have a good alignment through the intersection. So in summary, the recommendations are in the short term to construct new traffic signals on Country Vista Drive at Henry Road and Legacy Ridge Drive and add a new roundabout at the Henry Road Mission intersection. And in the long term, to widen the Mission Harvard Roundabout to have two northbound, southbound lanes through the intersection and add right turn lanes for the east-west approaches. Finally, in the long term, an extra southbound left turn lane at the Liberty Lake Appleway intersection will provide some extra capacity that helps out the left turn movements at the intersection. So there's something striking me about this list. One, it's it's not too long, relatively speaking, and some of these are already underway. So I think there's some interesting conclusions to draw from this is that I I think there's some credit to the city for being proactive for its transportation needs. And not only getting some of these projects underway already or under design, but you know, queuing them up so that we're already taking action on many of these projects that that have come up in this analysis. I think it also shows that there's strong value for the recent or pending projects that the city is undertaking, such as the, you know, the the Henry Bridge and the the Harvard improvements as well. So I think credit goes to the city for doing a good job. You guys are have vision and you're you're thinking ahead. And you're choosing good projects. So the list of improvements isn't as long as I would have expected or that I've seen in other cities. So I think we have some some recommendations that will help the transportation system going forward. Some of them are already underway and I there's a a good plan for moving out even into the 2040 horizon. So that concludes the the technical content that I have to share today. Are there any other questions that I can help with what I've shared?
That's several.
Great.
Okay, so my first question is, on the Harvard Roundabout, long-term, you the LOS was identified as a letter D. Is that is that acceptable grade for long-term?
Yes, it is. Yeah. In the traffic engineering world, we like to go for level service D or better. Anything worse than D represents conditions where you know, drivers can have a much harder time getting through the intersection. Level service E or F at a traffic signal means you might have to wait through multiple cycles of green lights before you actually get up to the intersection to move through. Level service E or F at a roundabout could mean that one or more of those legs just can never fight their way into the roundabout because there's so much circulating traffic that there's never a big enough gap. The level service D means there's a pretty good balance and vehicles are able to get through the roundabouts without having to wait on average more than, you know, fifty, sixty seconds.
So that letter coding applies to all of your charts?
Correct, yeah.
So it's not like school. If I got a D, oh, boy.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
My next question pertains to your summary. You have two two recommendations in your proposal and are on page twenty-six and on page twenty-seven. One of them talks encourages a roundabout to complement traffic flow over on Mission. The other one talks about the recommendation for traffic signals on Country Vista. And the reason you have here is we refer to more controlled experience for pedestrians and bicyclists, as Tom brought up earlier. But as I look at the as I think about the Country Vista Corridor versus the Mission Corridor, it seems like the bulk of the activity of Mission is residential and the bulk of the activity on Country Vista is the opposite. It's more of a commercial environment. So my question is, in all of this, what a great presentation it is, is the pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, golf cart traffic part of the equation?
Yes, it certainly is. Now, I can mention at the beginning, from the network-wide analysis perspective, we focused more on the vehicular environments. The Country Vista Drive analysis was a subset of the network-wide analysis, and for that quarter, we did much more focus about the pedestrian bicycle experience. And we made some recommendations in in that part of the analysis about crosswalk placement and crosswalk types and, you know, sidewalks and such. So to that respect, you know, the answer to your question is yes and no. You know, pedestrians weren't evaluated as much at the network-wide wide level, but there was certainly a focus at the Country Vista Drive corridor level.
So would it make, I mean, does it make sense to move traffic in your in the Country Vista Corridor and focus on moving traffic and over on Mission focus more on traffic pedestrian interaction? Or am I totally backwards?
Well, the Country Vista Drive Corridor, as noted in, you know, the the comprehensive plan and you know, zoning, there's some there's some strong city goals about making that an environment where, you know, individuals can walk. It's walkable. It's not
I'm looking at the zoning right now of the Country Vista Corridor, and it's all M2.
There's a and and I would refer back to the Country Vista Drive specific analysis that we did. I get to try and see if I can bring some of that language right now. But the M2 zoning has some descriptions like a mixture of land uses to encourage walking as an alternative to driving. Transit-oriented development reduces reliance on the audible veil and parking needs. And and that's also similar to some of the, you know, a little bit others on it, like the M3 talks about, hey, the M3 zoning is the heart of the community. Logical logical place for people to gather and create a business center. There's a little bit of M3 on the Country Vista Drive Corridor. As you mentioned, the majority is M2, but the M2 zoning does talk about, you know, encouraging walking as an alternative to driving.
Well, that's why I asked you about the the lettering, the letter D, because at at long-term traffic lights are versus a roundabout in that corridor. I just don't want to, the reason I'm asking this question is, as you showed me the 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 slide on the roundabout over on Harvard, I immediately immediately thought to myself, why didn't we design that as a two-way roundabout from the get-go? Anticipate north, south, east, west. So I don't, the reason I'm asking this question now on the on the Country Vista Corridor is ten, fifteen years from now, I don't want to, I don't want the city to be in a situation where we say, why didn't we talk about the roundabouts instead of the traffic lights?
Yeah, you know, during the Country Vista Drive quarter analysis, we compared roundabouts versus signals on on Country Vista. And I I think you're you're you know, you're interested in making sure we get it right and choose the right type. There's certainly pros and cons with each. You know, if you if you put a roundabout on Country Vista Drive, we found that it's going to have to be a two-lane roundabout east and west. And there are some resistance to do a two-lane roundabout over by the high school. And so I think some of those concerns, you know, community concerns with that also extend to other parts of Country Vista Drive. Also, since signals are going in at the high school, and there's a signal over at Appleway. You know, I mean, Liberty Lake Road. Having signals in between will be will provide a more consistent experience for the drivers through the corridor. So I mean, there's several factors. Those are those were a couple of factors that weighed in. There was also, I think, a a piece of land on the quadrant south. Could be getting wrong, southwest quadrant of the Henry Country Vista Drive intersection that has some environmental concerns. A roundabout has a bigger footprint and has more potential to encroach on some of those environmental concerns. Whereas a signal, you can keep the footprint a little bit small. So, you know, overall, there were several considerations that were examined for roundabouts versus signals at both of those locations. And the ultimate recommendation was to go with a traffic signal.
Charles, I'd like to point out something, too, that when we built the roundabout at Harvard and Mission on the north side of I-90, they did model both scenarios, and they figured that there was enough light out of a single lane roundabout, so that's the option they went with. Washington State Department Transportation has something called Practical Solutions. And we did get, we have probably eight years in the current configuration, and you're not showing a stress system until twenty years from now. So just timing is something maybe we should point out, too, is that when the roundabout on the north side of I-90 goes to a D, that's twenty years from now. It's not today. And I don't know what the life of a roundabout is as far as traffic engineering goes, but I know they did look at practical design solutions for the roundabout that we ended up having.
My only comment, my only comment would be, yes, the the roundabout takes more space, but I think the space is more readily available today instead of fifteen years from now, twenty years from now. Just looking for both sides. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilor Kurt.
One of the things that I I think I remember from the the corridor analysis for Country Vista, the pros and cons for the roundabout versus the light was the light was one of the safer ways for pedestrians to travel across, as we talked about putting in the beacons and that. But that the roundabouts are actually more expensive to construct. And so those were two of the things that I think I remember from from that analysis. Is that correct?
I I wouldn't speak on the cost. But in terms of the pedestrian environment, yeah, the signal provides a more controlled experience. It's vehicles are given a red signal and required to stop for you whereas at a roundabout, they only yield. And so there is some risk for pedestrians and some discomfort going through that. Now, what the roundabout has going for it on that side is that there's usually the splitter island, so you're just crossing one lane of traffic at a time. However, at a two-lane roundabout, that becomes a little bit more difficult because it's harder for drivers to see when there's two lanes of traffic. The other thing is that two-lane roundabouts also become much more difficult for cyclists traveling through the roundabouts, not just crossing on the legs, but going through because to make a left turn, they're required to you know, shift lanes to get from the outside shoulder to in-between lanes within the roundabout. And that could be very difficult, trying to compete with the speeds of of vehicles approaching and inside the roundabout.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
I have one on the pedestrian bicycle aspect of that. Is there a way to find out? I mean, we're discussing that that's part of the equation. Is there a way to find out what kind of demand we're looking for? What kind of usage are we actually going to need to accommodate for?
So your question is, how how much pedestrian bicycling demand can we expect?
On Country Vista Corridor and Mission Corridor?
Yeah, I I don't have an answer for exact numbers on those. Oftentimes, how much pedestrian cycling activity you see is a function of multiple factors. There's the land use factor, what kind of land uses are there? And are the land uses complementary to each other such that you would have a pedestrian trip between one and the other? Another is what type of infrastructure do you have? When there's a lack of cycling structure like, you know, no bike lanes, shoulders, poor sidewalks, you often see cyclists stay away from that corridor, you know, especially the more casual cyclists. There's a a classification called the strong and fearless cyclist that will bike you about anywhere. And and they will, but they represent a much smaller percentage of the potential cycling demand. So land use, infrastructure all have play in it. And and also there's the network consideration. You can have a bike lane. But if on either side of the bike lane, there's nothing, you know, you have a bike lane to nowhere, then it's going to a lot less use than one that connects to a cohesive system. And I think that that relates to some of the comments, public comments we heard at the beginning of the meeting is, you know, hey, we've got some great trails. We see people on them. We want to make sure we keep that momentum going and make sure we keep a strong network that allows people to make the, you know, trips from from their origin to where they want to go.
Thank you.
Councilor Dan.
Hey, I just, Charles, that strikes a sort of a resonant resident gesture for me as recognizing land use, the high school. I want to draw attention to directly adjacent, then high concentrations of residential use along the Country Vista Corridor. So I draw attention to, we could probably anticipate pretty high volumes of residents and pedestrians and cyclists looking to make use of that. So when I think about planning, you know, I know we're drawn back down just to the Country Vista Corridor. I would anticipate because of that relevant land use, yeah, in the increase in pedestrians and cyclists specifically.
Yeah. You know, all it takes is one one gas station, one fast food joint to go in across from the high school, and then suddenly you have a ton of pedestrian demand. So, yeah, the land use makes a a big impact.
Any other comments from the council?
All right.
Charles.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the time and I appreciate the interest and hope we've been able to provide some useful information for the city moving forward. And thank you for, you know, accommodating this virtual presentation. I'm glad we I'm glad we could do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles.
If I may just make a comment as to next steps. The next steps with this report, we will need to schedule a virtual house publicly, as we did with the Country Vista Corridor, and we will then be bringing back a report, a final report to the council with council adoption. So adoption as maybe amended. So we'll adoption as maybe amended, but we'll we'll be bringing it back for action at a future date.
Did everyone get that?
Kind of.
Kansas? Okay. So it's gonna be open to the public or we do kind of the virtual and then it'll come back? Okay, action items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On action item consent agenda one, I motion to approve July 7, 2020, City Council minutes.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it?
Consent agenda two, I make a motion to approve July 21, 2020 vouchers in the amount of $827,149.45.
Second.
Discussion? Any questions? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Resolution?
Resolution number 20-276, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane, Wisconsin. The resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, approving the final class of public storm second edition located in a portion of the south half of the northeast corridor of section 11, township 25N, range 45EWM, Liberty Lake, Washington, file P-06, yes, 0002E.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number 20-276.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it?
Resolution number 20-277, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane, Wisconsin. A resolution providing for the disposal of inventory items deemed to be surplus to the reasonably foreseeable needs of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington.
Mr. Mayor, I I make a motion to approve resolution number 20-277.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kurt's. Discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Introduction of upholding net items.
Okay, there's quite a few, so I'll go through them. They are in order because we were moving things around a little bit today. We're going to have the council consider approving an easement to give us the right of way to construct the traffic signal at Ridgeline High School. We need some additional public right of way in order to make that installation complete. We do ask the council approve the purchase of a sand saw box to assist us with snow removal services. We do have a resolution for the final path of river crossing East First Edition. If that's ready, it will be on the agenda. RJ's been working on the travel policy. We need some housekeeping changes and so he will have something on the agenda related to our travel policy. And I'll let you know, we have travel policy in our finance policy. We also have an ordinance. So he's going to reconcile those two documents. We also have, I believe, Lisa, we're going to have the RV sales and service public hearing for changes to development homes, which will be, is that a a public hearing? That is public, yeah, public, thank you. Okay, couldn't read my own writing. And then finally, the street vacation that got moved from tonight's agenda will be on next meeting's agenda. And we do have an executive session plan for potential litigation. There that can support the, for their price.
Okay, any citizen comments? This is your second opportunity. You can signify by hitting the chat button on the bottom. Not hearing any. We will be moving to executive session. It's 8:55 right now. We'll be moving into executive session at nine o'clock to discuss real estate. Should last about 20 minutes. There will be no action after that and we will end the meeting at that point. See you in a few.
See you in a few.